Who's arrived and who's logged in so we can join on. So a formal hello to everybody and welcome to this town hall meeting. A physical and virtual discussion on the state of nation of Nigeria to see where we are and how we got here. And hopefully deliberate and reflect on how to get out of the mess we're in. The situation we are at the moment is that of under development, insecurity, general chaos and uncertainty in the system. By uncertainty, I refer to justice, I refer to not knowing sometimes what we're doing or why. The question we're posing today, today being the first in a series of this set of town hall meetings we're doing, which is centered around citizens and professionals, those who produce and really do the things in this country, is to ask ourselves an ethical question, which is the role of professionals in the way this system is managed. Those of us who have read the introductory note written by Professor Patrick Tomy, which we shared to most of you today, summarized the point some of us have been asking ourselves. Is it possible for money to be looted in a ministry, in a government, in a department, without the knowledge or even the consent of pollution of accountants? Is it possible for state government ministers and anybody else in this country in government to disobey the law whilst the Attorney General is looking at it? So we talked about a lot of issues in this country from corruption to matters of corruption and a lot. And we're asking ourselves, yes, blame the politician, easy game, you can all see that. But what about the professionals? What is their role and how do they see these things? To discuss this matter with us today, as I said, in this series of town hall meeting, we've selected and a big thank you to them for accepting a set of professionals. I'll keep introduction going as we go along. Right with me, very close to me, although maintain a bit of distance, is Mr. Tolu Mobolary. Thanks for joining. And close to me as well is Professor Patrick Tomy, who some of you might know vaguely.
Very vaguely.
Very vaguely. There's a long history of concerned professionals in this country, very proud history. I mean, the pioneers will not say, but those of us who came along later knew at one point it was one of the most noble thing in this country. I think a lot has been done in the past, but starting from today, I think it's time for all of us to roll up our sleeves and start again. We shall start the day with an introductory remark from Professor Patrick Tomy to sort of lead us in today. Then as we go along, each of the panelists will be called to make some intervention. Then we shall try best to open up the floor for the rest of us. Our friends from the media can send a direct message when they want to intervene or they have direct question they want to set out. Thank you very much. Professor Tomy.
Well, thank you so very much. I think the first thing, an important thing to do is acknowledge the collaboration of the Association of Professional Bodies of Nigeria, APBN, traveling down this track. Many years ago, a group of us had the privilege of engaging with the challenge of nation building in Nigeria as professional people. We went under the banner of the Concerned Professionals. And as I was just joking before we started, Sir Oboluni was Chair of the Concerned Professionals for a significant period during the turbulent part of our nation's history. And what we tried to do as Concerned Professionals is to say that, you know, we all have obligations, we all have duties in a country. Citizenship is actually a privilege that confers certain obligations to us, on us, sorry. And amongst those obligations are the obligations of engaging in ensuring that we make the right choices as a society. So when in 1993, the military leadership chose a course that we thought was very dysfunctional, that we thought was going to take the country down a wrong path, a group of professionals got together and began to intervene directly in public conversation. That group of Concerned Professionals, of course, in the view of many others outside of the membership, had impact, impacts that invariably had a thing or two to do with the end of military rule. Now, I still recall that as that end was approaching, there was a question of what should we now do as Concerned Professionals? They were in our acts, one or two, who thought that we as professionals should engage directly in public life, actually found a party and try and fill the space at the time. I don't know how well Tola recalls the meeting that took place, it was actually in my office in Victoria Island, where we discussed that subject matter. I know that Donald Duke was present and a couple of others. And our general consensus was that we're citizens, we played our role, the politicians come and do what they know how to do. Of course, outside, after the meeting, Donald Duke said, at least to a couple of us standing around there, that he was going to go and organize his people if we didn't want to be involved in public life. Well, we know better, after a few years, it was clear that the politicians were hoping we would take over the country. Kind of didn't trust the military, didn't believe they were going to leave. And so didn't quite engage. And that was open season for the bad men of the soldiers who took over the space in 1999. And quite frankly, I don't think that our country has recovered from that era of that moment from both the traditional politicians and the concerned professionals, in my view. Even I was one of those who said that we should return to just being citizens. Now, having come this far, I think that nobody who is honest will disagree with the fact that we're on the edge. We're close to the edge of a precipice and we've been brought here by poor governance. We're close to the edge of a precipice. The possibilities of anarchy over taking us as a country just looms every day. But if as professionals we really were diligent and fully engaged, we would know for a fact that nothing that is happening today was not predicted, it was totally predictable. I often give the example of the fact that in 1999, an American called Robert Kaplan had published a book titled The Common Anarchy, in which he projected where he thought his cleavage. Now, what was particularly troubling about Robert Kaplan's projection, two things troubling to me from his projections. One of those is that a same person had written a book titled Balkan Ghosts, in which he more or less predicted what happened in the Balkans. When Tito was still alive, he basically predicted a disintegration of the Balkans after Tito. And here he was suggesting that West Africa had a strong probability of descent into anarchy. And coming on the heels, by the way, of a couple of books about Nigeria around that time by foreigners, Kalmea had just written the book This House Has Fallen: Midnight in Nigeria. And there was another title, This Present Darkness. All together, those books frightened me into pulling together a group of friends, starting a group called Nigerians United to Resist Anarchy Nutrural. Because we soon tired, but our first effort was to neutralize. One of our first efforts was to send copies of this book around to security leaders. And some of our friends in senior positions in security operators got copies of Kaplan's book. And through the years, we've just watched these things happen. And before I get to the heart of why this particular engagement, we watched similar things happen elsewhere. I had a good fortune, a privilege of being invited to speak at the 60th birthday of Pastor Wali Adiparasi. Also speaking on that day was a certain Professor Yemi Oshimbaju, who is now Vice President of Nigeria. And I recall that after we both spoke, I said, my goodness, the spirit is truly won. Because we gave examples from different clients that pointed in the same direction. I gave an example from Liberia, which I talked about a colleague of mine from graduate school in the US, who had returned to Liberia and he didn't finish his PhD. I was coming back to my apartment one day and I saw a U-Haul in front of his apartment. I said, Si, what's happening? He says, I'm going back to Monrovia. I said, wow, what are you going back to do? He said, people are saying, what are you wasting time studying and studying in America? The good life is here, man. So anyway, he returned to Monrovia. Very soon he had his Mercedes, very soon, big titles, very soon. He said, he saw the politicians misbehaving and he said nothing because he was afraid that if he spoke up, he could lose his Mercedes. Then one day, some staff agents did a move and he saw things going wrong. He could have said something, he talks now, he may lose his house, nice house, nice neighborhood, but he kept quiet. Then one day, things just broke down. You were driving your Mercedes on the road, somebody will flag you down, hey, my friend, stop there, give me the key. And you looked and you said, oh, my God, so did he, my Mercedes. Thank God I have my life, at least I have a nice house to go back to. And then you go back to the house and in the night, one day, bo, 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 yes, Komandante, you won't use this house, pack out, out immediately. And progressively, he deteriorated. And he said, and the point that I was making that day, he said, you know, you Nigerians have been so nice and so kind. At this time, this gentleman was Liberia's ambassador of Nigeria during that war. And he was living in the Liberian Embassy in Victoria Island, not too far from my home. And he and I would get together in the evenings and talk. He says, you Nigerians, we're pouring Nigerian blood like water through the gutters or through the gutters of Liberia to save us. And oh, are we grateful, we're very grateful to you. And so the duty of vigilance, a country, is such a fundamental one because professionals tend to say, ah, leave them, those politicians, those mad people. In the end, it's you, the politician, the professional, it's every citizen who pays the death price for not speaking up when you should have. That's the trouble that Nigeria has. Now, as we go into this, this present darkness in Nigeria, the real question before us is, are professionals not call people in a manner of speaking for the problems that afflict Nigeria? I don't know how many times election rigging and false indications and games were played without somehow lawyers being complicit. And the question is, who should hold lawyers, attorneys general and emotionally taking advantage of the situation for their personal short-term gain? Have allowed us to begin to kill each other on something that is in nobody's interest, this pooh-pooh raising. Not in the interest of Katina, not in the interest of the full and the headers, not in the interest of the cows, not in the... Yet, we're killing each other about it because it serves the political interests of a few people. Next one I turned to was revenue allocation. I said, nice, American economist, Thomas Sowell, who treats this subject better than most people that I know of. And the summary of it is that revenues have never led to sustainable wealth. What leads to success, sustainable wealth is production. As a child, I grew up in northern Nigeria, the beauty of the ground, the pyramids, the extraordinary output, even in industrialization of vampire industrial estate in Kanu, where I started school in 1960. What happened to all the production? Well, what happened to the production was revenue. That when we began to share revenues and the revenues were coming largely from crude oil, it affected production. And people stopped producing and the energies were invested in getting a share of those revenues. So today, we've got a three-tier local government system. In the 60s, we didn't have them. And so we had more local governments in the south than in the north. With political power, we now have more than twice as many in the north as in the south. And this has been huge revenue flows. What has happened? We're much poorer than they were. So in reality, these revenues are hurting the people because it produces what is called a lottery effect. You see a man who won the lottery twin, who's a poor man. Today, he is probably much poorer than he used to be. Instead of us to learn from all of these things, for everybody's good, our approach to building wealth, we go into this between each other, business and creating problems because we are not having rational, public conversation. And this is part of why we're having this today. Maybe we can better understand who we should hold accountable for our feelings. And those people, including people we see in the mirror, we, the professionals, who are not holding each other accountable. So we hope that the various professionals, the bankers, can explain to us how the governors take the monies out through the banks. Atoma Moboluri is one of the great financiers of the business. So we have one of our speakers, Vice President of the Chartered Institute of Bankers, Professor Larry Ouadju. Perhaps he will speak to such things when he comes up, he has joined online. These people are bankers, including you. You know, and so on and so forth. And there are things we can do, it's not so much about the blame game now, but there are ways we can retool so that we can hold people accountable. And I'll close with what the Soja Pampa and his group tried to do many years ago. And Convention of Business Integrity, they came to the chambers of commerce and those kinds of places. And they said, businesses should be able to sign in public a statement and say, I will not give, I will not take. Well, I'm sorry to report that I was sitting in a council meeting of Lagos Chamber of Commerce and Industry when Soja Pampa and one of my old Loyola school mates, Bishop Fekun, came to make that presentation. And the chamber, kind of like members of the chamber looked around, like, what are these guys talking about? Only three of us, I believe, Dr. Colade, myself, Gina Kukui, and I don't know, maybe there was fourth person, agreed to do that. I think this is a tragedy of Nigerian condition, that's why we are where we are today. I thank you and welcome you.
Thank you very much, Professor Patrick Tomy. We have listed here to speak today, Professor Larry Ouadju has been mentioned, Semifalan is expected, Tola Mobolari is nominated here, Patrick Tomy has started speaking, Munis Bani Ray is expected, Francis Alali is expected, Samuel Aguey is expected, Professor Scanyamo and Governor Rotimakuredu. But since we have Professor Larry Ouadju online, I don't know how we're going to connect him. I think we should yield the floor to let us hear from his own point of view, you know, as a professional of professional and as a banker of bankers as well. Because revenue, competence, rational conversation, I think a good place to start is with the money. How are they able to take this money and what can professionals do or what should they be doing? But a general conversation, since this is a series of conversations and we shall probably set the agenda up today as we go along. So Professor Larry Ouadju, I yield the floor to you.
Thank you, the organizers of this program. And take one of those people, one of our highly respected professionals that I'm seeing there. Can you hear me? Can you hear me, sir? Yeah, yeah, yeah. I want to seize this golden opportunity to thank the organizers of these programs and bring in this conversation to the general public. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, yes, just to be sure. Once again, I just seized the opportunity to thank the organizers of this program and for raising this issue that Nigeria has been facing for quite some time and without many of the professionals keeping silence. But I want to start by saying that the problem of Nigeria is not only the problem of the professionals, it is the problem of every one of us. I want to start by saying that our problem is a dialectical one. Dialectical in the sense that I have never, in my conversation with Professor Patrick Tomy a couple of days ago, I said, I've never seen a country where mediocrity, you know, is being raised, you know, beyond meritocracy. I've seen that nation prosper. I've looked at our problem, all this problem we are talking about, accountant not performing very well, lawyers not performing very well, as a Nigerian, politicians not performing very well. We should start from that particular, who are these caliber of professionals that are there? Are they actually qualified in terms of experience proven? Are they actually qualified in terms of integrity? These are issues. And also the society we have, we have found ourselves, unfortunately, I could recollect when I was living in my village a couple of years ago, precisely December 1976. The thing, one thing that my mother kept on ringing as very important is the word, not your many, it was she. Remember the son of whom you are, when you are in Lagos, don't join Lagos bar. Always remember that you have a name, the family has a name, you may not have money, but we have a name. Such words are hardly heard. I've been to my village recently, hardly will you hear that kind of a word in a village. What the kind of what you hear in a village today, you know, are the ones that you have to do, you have to be fast, you have to do something that others have been, you are not the only professional, are you the only one there? We're not preaching the words and everything, we want action, we want money, bring money to the village. So from there, the summation of that is that we have with us today a failing value system in our society. And until we address those things, the professionals are not going to come from heaven. They are part of the, they are part of Roto, and they are part of the society at large. If they are part of the society at large, we go to school, we pick somebody, we pick engineer, we pick bankers, we pick all these people. Already, some of them are already formed as to what they will do for this nation. Prejudicism is new. Has anybody in the class, as a teacher, that you ask them, about 70 or 80% of them will be saying that, I want to go and make money. I want to jump on this, I want to make money. In that kind of environment, it becomes a problem because you are not going to use any means of detecting who is going to make money. It does not a condition precedent for one being a bitter as a professional banker. So we only look at them by way of performance. And when this inner conviction is already there, that they are going to the public service to make money, they are going to the company to shit, it becomes a problem. And that will lead me to my own institute. I think it was Lord Ellings, you know, who said a couple of years ago in your case, in this case, that the total banker must have, you know, a cap that is detailed with two halves. It's a vase of expertise and vase of discretion. And that under that discretion, we have issues relating to name, we have issue relating to integrity, we have issue relating to ethics, we have issue related to professionalism. Those days, most of the cap of those people that are representing us are not with that kind of value system. The value system has been polluted by society. It has been polluted by the professional itself. Oh, our member is there. Immediately somebody is appointed as a minister today or accounting body or banking body, you go there and pay homage. And when they are paying the homage, not to tell the man, not with intention of telling the man that you are going to be a proud ambassador or good ambassador. Why do you tell the man, what are you going to do for us? The old school, you know, mates, we go there, the secondary school, the university mates will come. All will be pressured on how to steal money because in the reserve, somebody is a salary earner and you are saying that it should give you million and everything, you're already pushing that, that's the kind of society we have. But nevertheless, the banking hat, which is the basis, you know, of legislation for bankers, we have provisions there. The issue there is that our people, the professionals are aware of the provisions, but there are issues, you know, that we really need to raise, whether the public is even aware or they have a responsibility to play in making sure that we apply this enactment. For example, Section 13, Sub-1 of the Bank of the CIBN Act makes it clearly that we have an investigation panel. Section 137 also made provision for a CIBN tribunal, which has a coordinate jurisdiction, even with the High Court. We can discipline and remember we can do this, but all these things cannot be achieved unless somebody from the ministry, unless somebody outside there is giving us information. And we have done it in the past, unfortunately for me, I had the opportunity of serving as the Chairman of the Investigation Panel and we have been, that is, so many people that they cannot work in the industry again. I also, I'm currently serving as the CIBN tribunal and I realize that we have done, but we have a problem. The problem there is that we cannot just be going out and picking people on the pages of newspaper. It must be Nigerians that will tell us that this thing is not wrong, that this one call is only a professional. And that is why we are asked by institute, I'm already doing that now, of raising the level of advocacy so that people can know that somebody is a banker, does not begin to be a thing, God. You are just there to serve the people, you are just there to manage the resources of the state, not to help somebody to loot it for personal gain and everything. So these things are there, but those people who are, I mean, the public also holds us a duty by intimidating us that these are the things that when we don't do anything, then we can be accused. Another thing that I've come to realize again, which is also a problem, we are already taking it to the bank, is that most of those people we call banking professionals are not even professionals in the very first place. Experience has taught me, having been in charge of education or that system for more than 25 years, that all, almost 70% of them working in the bank today, they are not members of the CIBN. And when that case comes up, you know, with a tribunal, you know, we look at them, we send them the necessary papers and summons only for them to start saying, I'm not a member of the institute, I'm not a member, I only work there, I'm a bank worker, I'm not a member of this institute. And we all know, as a finance lawyer, I know the importance of jurisdiction. It will go ahead to go and go with the proceeding of trying these people, we just be wasting our time because he is not a member. And that is why we have carried it to bankers committee as part of a new initiative that let everybody that is working in the bank, because we are talking about resources, if we look at the genesis of our bank effort, we all realize that it was from the ghost bit perspective and this ghost bit, and otherwise, people are foreign, people of integrity, people care the value of the people and anytime they come for it, it's certainly available. So if somebody wants to work in the bank, it doesn't take rocket science to tell the person, please, feel this code of conduct, provisional conduct that has been put in place because some years ago, we realized that Because, uh, some years ago, we realized that there were platonias of these codes in the bank, first bank of Brazil, you know, bank of Brazil and everything, and we sat down with some, uh, professional colleagues and some professional university, we tried to bring together all these codes under one code that is existing today. So the codes are there, the factions are named there, if any members of this institute, you know, to commit any of those offenses, we have the right to, right to the institute. But like I said, the banker, I mean, those who work in the bank, that they are there and everything, we are already asking them that if you want us to be really effective and to be able to reach, uh, achieve our goals, you have to, and, and, and make sure that all those people that are working in the bank are members of the institute. Because our tracknet can only caught those people within the net, who is working within the system. If they are not a member, there is nothing we can do. I believe that if some of, if this awareness is created, if issues like this are being raised, you know, in the public domain that we are doing, the conversation will continue and the orientation, you know, we change. Our orientation concerning property, integrity and transparency, uh, is at the lowest level. Even in the, in most of the corporate environment today, where you want to stand out, people in your, even in the church, even in the church, people will say, "Are you the only one there?" You want to be only that, this does, what was, was a problem, once everybody has passed through the place, they knew what, when Mr. Bean was there, we immediately changed his heart and moved to the case. Those things are, we should continue, we should, we should discourage them, we should let people know that good name is still better than riches and it will still continue to be better than riches. So this is the perspective I can share for now, maybe as the conversation continues, if there are other issues, but we know that the bankers that are perpetrating this, if we, we will get information, there are provisions. We have seen so many of them, many of them have already been, you know, sanctioned in the past, and I can, because I, I happen to have worked, you know, in the investigation panel, uh, stage, and also had it currently working at the tribunal stage. So I believe that since people are getting this awareness now, and we are raising the issue in the public domain, there will be an improvement. Maybe I should raise my case at this decision and allow others to contribute as we go ahead, further contribution will be made. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you very much, Prof. I think we take away two crucial things from, um, your interventions so far. I preambulate that by saying that as a banker, you speak that, to say, that you are also dismayed with the situation of things in the country. And that the bankers have in place mechanism to, to tackle ill-behaviors of bankers. And it appears that what you expect is citizens' response and to be proactive, to denounce any sort of malfeasance. I also think at this point, for bankers as well as others, it is important to invite professionals to publicize their stance on expected behavior of professionals in governance and when they deal with the public space. But I'd like, um, others to speak. Whilst we're still banking and finance, and I, and I'll try to chat with other people who are ready, I'm going to let, um, Kifto Mobolyri comment now.
We're talking about money. Well, I, I, uh, thank you, Professor Kila, and, uh, let me also thank Pat for going down the path of history of concerned professionals. But I think we must, I must pivot on the last because, uh, the president of the Chathan Institute of Bank, the vice president of the Chathan Institute of Bank, what he said about the society at large. Public officers, all citizens are part of a society. And it's actually the values of the society that is reflected in all of us. And therefore, if we see apparent behavior in a large number of the citizens, it's because, you know, that is probably the mainstream values that exist in our society. And therefore, we need to wake up and ensure that, you know, uh, we, we, we instill better values, not just on those who are in public office, but even in the society at large. Because if the society at large is corrupt, the public officers do be corrupt because they are recruited from the society at large. But the point can be made because I know that a lot of professional bodies have strict rules of, uh, ethics that govern their profession. And the understanding and the basis of this conversation, or at least the postulation that we would like to put forward is, if every professional were to abide by their professional ethics, the society would be a better place. And really, the values that will come out of every professional, in the end, will be values that will sustain the progress of the society. Uh, I don't want to hold any profession as, uh, most culpable because all of us are culpable. Uh, well, you see, the bankers have their own problems, but so do quantity surveillors, so do civil engineers, so do accountants. Uh, and, and frankly, most of the politicians that we like to deride, deride, some of them are, most of them are professionals or have been professionals. Uh, because when you then don't behave in a professional manner, you cease to be entitled to be called a professional. Because the reference to a professional is somebody who acts ethically and knowledgeably. And if you are not acting knowledgeably and you are not acting ethically, you cannot say you are a professional. So to that extent, lawyers who collude with criminals cannot say they are professional. Neither can the banker that opens, uh, what do they call it now, uh, slush, slush funds account, uh, with no name, uh, I think they call it suspense account, uh, running into billions of naira, they cannot say they are professional. Similarly, an accountant that helps in disguising monies going out of a company or of a state or of a local government can also not say to be, can also not say, calling himself a professional. Then, both the responsibility to change the ethical tone of our society. And of course, you know, if people, if everybody is in one way or the other, not professional, that means that a lot of resources are being diverted and there will be suboptimal performance in governance. I think that is the problem. But I think we must be able to show to the society at large, and I think this is where the education, civic education for the society is necessary. We must be able to point to people that, look, when a doctor doesn't act professionally, he hurts not just the patient, but the society at large. When the accountant does not behave professionally, it has a cost, uh, to the society. When a quantity surveillor helps in inflating the contract, it has, it limits the capacity of the state to meet other needs. And therefore, the hospital that is not built, the school that is not built, the public water system that is not built, the sewage system that is not built, the roads that are not built, all go down to the professional, unprofessional behavior of those who serve the public. Uh, and I think if we all can get back onto our professional and be true to our professional ethics and standards, the society will be a lot, a lot better for it. And this, and even the common man will feel the impact of governance. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. I have two things here. I understand clearly when you make the case that when a professional stops acting as a professional, he's no more a professional now, he's no more to be compared to. So he's either a rogue or, or a mere politician or just anybody that is not acting so. But I have a problem here, and, and I also have a proposed solution, which I would like other professionals to delve into. I think it is not enough to morally or nominally or sort of iconistically or spiritually denounce professionals. I think where we are at the moment in this country, we should ask ourselves, and I ask all professionals, including the vice president of the Association of Professional Body, if it is possible to have an extra charter for professionals when they deal with public office, either when they assume it or when they liaise with it in any way. So that we should have a rule saying that any banker, accountant or auditor that deals with anything government-related is bounded by this extra chapter of principles, so that we can expect that. The other thing is that it appears that we all agree, Mr. Mobolyri said it, Professor Alari Raja said it that, and I think Palitomi also said the same, this is that, if professionals go to public life and remain professionals, it should be good for all. So that means that something happened in the space, that someone, what does it do? It transmutes them from being the professionals they were into something else there. So maybe schools needs to do a bit more on banking on ethics as we started today. But as we said, this is the first in a series where we continue to open these layers to see the root cause of, of, of where we're going. Um, I'm going to soon come back listed on the line as lawyers, but I'll go back to Mr. Mobolyri then, I'll come back to the lawyers now.
I, I think one of the things we need to do is to sanitize the public space. Uh, a professional who lives his professional life and goes into public space must also find an environment that is conducive for him to remain a professional. And that is why the public space itself needs to be sanitized. Two things that I would like to offer the society to look at. Every public officer should declare his assets and liabilities on taking public office. It is not enough to file asset declaration with the Code of Conduct Bureau. That asset declaration must be available to the public. It is the secrecy in what people are filing that allows them to hide their assets. And if people are not declaring their assets, the public does not know. But if a man declares his assets and, and it's published, people who know him will say, "No, he has five, six other houses that he has not listed." Uh, and that puts pressure on him to explain the source of the income that acquired those assets. The second thing, because like a good accountant, you have the balance sheet, you must also look at the income statement. Between the income statement and the balance sheet, you will get the cash flow. And therefore, apart from declaring your assets, you must also publish your tax returns. The reason why Trump does not want to release his tax returns is obvious. He does not want people to, to see the cash flow. How is the cash coming in? Where is the cash? Where has he hidden the assets? Now, if you do both, public declaration of assets, public declaration of income statement for all public officers, and maybe a few years after they've left office, it puts, it exposes them because transparency starts from the individual, not just from the government. Transparency, let all public officers be transparent in their own lives as well as in their actions in public office. If we can do that, then we'll be getting somewhere. The professional who goes into office will then be, will not be as susceptible to bribery as, because he knows that, you know, look, these things will be, yeah, he can't hide these things very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll, we'll soon come back, um, to rounds of innovation. Let us go to the law. We have listed, um, Semifellano, um, came, um, and Munis Baniray as well to speak. Um, but I'm not sure if they're online yet, but I see, um, Mondo Ubbani. Whilst, whilst we wait for them, I'm going to call in, um, Mondo Ubbani. Public intersection of the, um, path to station, yes. So, yes, I think he's online, I can see him now. I yield the floor for Mondo Ubbani.
Yes, uh, thank you very much. I hope I'm being heard.
You are very well.
Yes, I, I've been following up the program a bit, uh, while doing one or two things in the office, but I, I listened to the introductory remarks of, uh, Professor Pat, and the issue is about, uh, what our professionals have been doing, uh, those in politics, and how they have actually helped in messing up the country and what we, who are their colleagues in our own profession should do in these circumstances. Of course, we'll be making reference to my profession, the Nigerian Bar Association, I'm a lawyer. And it is our belief that anyone of our, uh, colleagues that is in politics, especially occupying the exalted office of the Attorney General, other of the Federation of State, must try as much as possible to ensure, uh, compliance with our rules, ensure that there is obedience to court orders. And then advise, uh, the chief executive, I mean, the governors or the president appropriately on obeying the constitution and, and other enacted laws that have been made by the National Assembly or State House of Assembly. And if any of the Attorney Generals are taking a position that is clearly at variance with those, uh, ethics, then there should be a prescription of, uh, of, of punishment, uh, which should be enforced. Uh, we have had situation where an Attorney General who, who is an, uh, senior advocate of Nigeria was actually stripped of his, uh, rank of a senior advocate of Nigeria by virtue of the role he played while he was the Attorney General of the Federation. But I'm surprised that after that singular act that received the commendation of the entire world, we, as Nigerian Bar Association, have stopped punishing some of, uh, our Attorney Generals, who obviously have been misbehaving in government. I mean, not only are they misadvising their chief executive, they have also, uh, made some public statements that are clearly at variance, uh, uh, with the provisions of the law and has actually put the legal profession in bad light. My, I, I was presently elected, uh, the chairman of Spidel is a, is a section, uh, in the Nigerian Bar Association, and this is the section that actually deal with the members of the public. And part of the, uh, things we are working on is to ensure that anyone who occupies the office of the Attorney General, I started this immediately I was elected and I called the council, uh, some of the council members, I said, "We will push for it." That any Attorney General in the other in the Federation or at the state level who, uh, from our records is found to have given wrong advice or put up any public statement that is clearly at variance with the ethics of our profession, that does not in any way encourage respect of rule of law or encouraging disobedience to court order, that there must be, uh, some level of punishment that we should mete out to that individual as a professional body. And I think that that is, uh, an idea, uh, that will be so to neck. Neck happens to be the second highest body of the, of the Nigerian Bar Association, and we will now try as, as much as possible to include it as part of our rules of ethics, you know, that if you occupy the off- that if you occupy the office, the political office, and as the Attorney General or even as a Governor, or even as a President, or even as a Minister, and there are things you are doing that is keeping this country retarded, that has not made us to make progress as a nation, knowing fully where we are, knowing fully where we're supposed to be and where our politicians have kept this country, that everyone in the profession must get angry and say it shouldn't be that way. We must not allow our professionals who we have taken time to train and have invited, should have invited all the ethics of the profession, that when they go into politics, they begin to show a different light entirely. And we allow them, when they come back, to come back and then begin to practice that profession. No, it shouldn't be that way. There must be something we have to do in order to discourage anyone who enters into politics and refuses to uphold the best international standard. If you do not uphold it, then there must be punishment for it. And I think that that will be the best thing for us to begin to do in order to send a right signal to those who are coming into governance, that they must try as much as possible for us to rescue Nigeria. Nigeria, I said in the particular conference I just ended, Nigeria is clearly a sick country as it is now. We are very sick and it requires people who knows the time to prescribe a particular drug that will revive us from our sick bed. And one of the things we begin to do is to hold our professionals accountable whom we have actually allowed to occupy political office, you know, they are our representatives. And when they are there, one would expect the best international practice from them, the best upholding of the ethics of that profession. And if they fail to do that, we should mete out punishment that is commensurate to the manner of offence they have actually committed and the public have kept us, you know, in a retarded manner. That is my only two contribution. As I said earlier, it's already in my own program as a strategy and which I will sell to the MBA President and will be able to push it through, that no longer will a lawyer who occupies a political office, you know, go there and begin to do things that are clearly at variance and not in tandem with the ethics of the profession. And then he comes back and joins us as a lawyer and we begin to accept him, but no, we must begin to now put them where they belong by meting out necessary punishment to discourage all those who are coming into politics, you know, with such bad behaviours. I think that is where we, that is the way to go. That is my only two contribution to this discussion, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Pati told me, that's fantastic. You know, nothing grows without a clear set of guides for consequence management. The mess, I'm afraid to say, sorry to use the word, but as a truth, mess the country is in is because there have been no consequences for bad behaviour. I think that any profession that's worth its all should have a penalty so strong for any member that goes into public life and misbehaves, that it becomes a constraining factor. And this is how institutions really help organizations, countries and all of those thrive. It's not that the average American who obeys traffic lights was created differently than the average Nigerian. In fact, if you check, the average Nigerian who arrives in New York, extremely well behaved. The moment he arrives Lagos, he goes totally wild. And if you, by the simple, you can bring an American, because, you know, sexual habits of a community is what institutions are. You know, because he has, because of the constraints, he behaving one way, then it looks like he behaves that way. Put him out in Lagos, he gets to Fallowmore, he waits, everybody has run past, he does it, after two weeks, he too begins to go. So I think that we must use the sanctions that professional bodies can bring on their members to begin to build that base for institutions that would eventually make our country an orderly place, because the cost is high. Now, look, for those of us professionals who say, oh, those politicians, let's count the cost right now. How many people want to invest in Nigeria around the world? How many? I mean, I should not mention, but senior Nigerian ministers who are recently out of the country. And they said to the Japanese, look, this is a large market, blah, blah. The Japanese were very, very honest to them. Yes, large market, but nothing else functioning in your country. Infrastructure does not work, the rule of law does not work, there is violence everywhere. It's better for us to manufacture these things in Ghana and sell to you. This means that people will be unemployed. Is it a surprise that we have thirty-three percent unemployment, youth unemployment is even more critical, running towards fifty percent and that we have people shooting people on? These are the consequences of our not having consequence management. And really, truly, it must be duty of every professional body to try and ensure that we reverse this. I do think as well, in addition to what you say, we've alluded to the fact that this is the first in a series of town hall meeting. I am going to be suggesting to the organizers as well that we look at the understanding and the consequence of corruption, mediocrity and incompetence, you know, beyond the moral value. I think it's time Nigerians wake up to look at the ricochet, the consequence of these things in our life. The reason why we can afford to have valuable properties that are empty is because we have a system that is not linked to the moral system, because people can just take money and buy cash and it's not costing them anything to tie down properties. I think Nigerians need to start seeing that. The reason why we can afford to have public state schools that are not working is because somehow some people can just move away in the private schools. If we were all tied down, save for the bad health consequence, the world were tied down during Covid, maybe we will all wake up when nobody can escape it to see what the situation is. But there is another issue which if not raised today, will be raised in the future, which is the importance for professional bodies to fight for the autonomy of their profession in, while exercising it, so that lawyers and judges, the bar, the autonomy that asks them for should be important. And I think the nomination of professional heads, like head of accountancy in any shape or form, should be something that should be outside government. I do not see any reason why the government should be nominating or financing judges or any of that function, or no other professional bodies as well. If the apex body, I argue, I strongly think, if the apex body of any professional exercise is a professional body itself, then I think the consequence Pali Tomi is asking for can be more rational, logical and more transparent. I know Mr Moboluun is going to leave us soon, so I'll let him round off before he goes and maybe suggest the future themes as we go ahead. I think that needs to be done.
I think basically, the professionals have a role to play. Like we said at the beginning, the professionals reflect the values of the larger society. And there are many people in politics today or in public life that do not belong to any professional association. So the issue of bringing people back into behaving in ethical manner as well as responsibly, you know, goes beyond just the profession. The professionals occupy a special position. They represent the elite in society. Indeed, most professional, most professionals are looked up to and therefore they need to also signal to the society the values that you endure in that society. When a society, when a professional therefore holds public office and misbehaves, he does two things. He debases his own profession and then he corrupts the larger society, because the people look up to him as maybe because of his professional training and discipline, they look up to him that he will be the light to the society. And when he becomes, you know, the other way, you know, then it becomes a problem for the society. But I think one last thing that I would like to say is the fact that I was reading something written by a public officer today and I looked at the background of that public officer and I said, look, obviously, too many of our public officers are recruited from the criminal gangs in the society. Because when you look at the antecedents of some of the public officers we have, and the story has been told several times, of a retired DIG that went into the Senate and looked around and said, gosh, a lot of the people, some of the people, some of the people that are investigated for some of the heinous crimes in the society are here. So the point, the point needs to be made. Where are we recruiting our public officers from? And what is the relationship between those in public office and those who are in the criminal gangs that are terrorizing the society?
A book that I have written and it has a very interesting title, Why Not? Citizenship, State Capture, Creeping Fascism and the Criminal Hijack of Politics in Nigeria. The truth of the matter is that there are people who have said publicly on television repeatedly that the Nigerian state is becoming a criminal enterprise, that there are too many people who are state actors. But we can't laugh about these things anymore because the world is laughing at us. Yeah, the world is laughing at us, that many of our leaders, many of our politicians are criminals and they combat it. Look, talk about state capture. What is state capture? State capture is the systemic and systematic corruption of governmental systems and institutions for the material benefit of individuals. And many times those are against the common good, the advance of the common good of all. And professionals have a duty, you know, beyond, a very important word you introduce, the discipline, that is what profession really is about, introducing discipline, doing things in a disciplined manner. There is the fact that people in the professions are people of privilege and the blessed obligation, that those who have privilege have responsibility, have duty. So professionals should be the ones that say, wait a minute, this is not acceptable and society cannot continue like this. Now we are getting the situation where people are shooting in broad daylight in city centres and it's okay, it's normal. This is because many of the people who are giving those instructions, who are politicians, are actually criminals. So it was, it's not abnormal to them that their followers are shooting, you know. Our country is in serious trouble. We need to take our country back from the criminality that has come to define public life. And professionals have a very important role to play in that happen. We're going to have some interventions from the people online who are not here, so if you can signify your interest, randomly, I'm going to call Dr Tywood Joe, who I saw came in on time. Are you still there, doctor? If Dr Tywood Joe is there, I'll let him talk. Or we can, others can raise up their, yes, you can raise your hand. Okay, you're there, doctor. All right, we start from you. Yes, do we have anybody else who want to intervene whilst we wait for him?
Hello, Prof.
Yes.
Can I just add a word to, Olaraji speaking, sir? Can you hear me, sir?
Yes, we can, yes.
Yes, I just believe, why commending our efforts? Hello, can I go ahead, sir? Yeah, why commending our effort? There is a warning, a warning I want us to take judicial notice about. And that is for us as professionals, for people to listen to us, for people to believe in us, because of the corrupt environment we have found ourselves, we must realize ourselves we must be above board. A lot of our professionals today are being polarized along ethnics, along political organizations. So there is, and again, you find out that even the leadership of some of these, I don't want to go into mentioning specific institutions, the leadership of these professions, some of them are having serious problems today. Some of them have been manipulated to go into office. Some of them are being involved in one shitty or the other. If we are doing exactly what the larger society is doing and we are condemned, nobody will take us seriously. So my admonition is that we should try as much as possible to do things in the right way so that we can showcase it to the world. I could realize a lot, some years ago, we ran into a problem when the election of Mayesi was, you know, when campaign was thrown to the board like the, like the whole world and everything, we ran into a problem. And after that, we changed the methodology of appointing and leadership. And one of the things, we did a credible election, electronic election, that was shown to the whole world, that was shown to other professional bodies, with, those are the kind of things that we made people to believe that these, truly, these people are really meant for each, we need to shape the system. But here we are also perpetuating the same corruption, the same evil that those at the macro level are doing. People will not take us seriously. So I'm admonishing those of us that are represented there, and in any of these institutions we find ourselves that we must set good examples. We must be the goodwill ambassador for that is good. It is only when we are doing that rightly and we are able to come together as a force that we can shape the system. I just believe it's pertinent for me to just mention that. Thank you.
Thank you for hosting us, by the way. And it's a town hall, this is the first in a series of getting together professionals across all bodies and across the country to get together to look at the state of the nation. Professionals who are interested in joining us to shape this conversation and to support it to any guys with ideas and your time, please get in touch with us. We're going to be rounding up now, so we're still opening the floor for anybody who wants to speak, who is joining us virtually, but we just round up. No, I can't say any questions there, but I think people are going to be getting in touch with us. So closing remarks, Priti told me, by the way, you are, in a way, you're professionals of any body, you are not exactly far away from those in politics and power. So you belong to us and you belong to them. We don't know who you belong to, really. Well, as one who belongs to no one and all one. You know, really seriously, that a number of things, I think professional bodies, professional groups, collections of peers, need to pay particular attention to terms of how our country is run. Now, let us stop monkeying around and sipping ourselves. Nigeria has been held hostage repeatedly because we have leaders that are mentally, emotionally and physically unwell. This has happened repeatedly in Nigerian history. It happened with Abacha. For six months, Abacha's last six months, he didn't even know what was going on. For six months, Abacha's last six months, he didn't even know what was going on. For the main, but people used his name to run the country. That is high treason. It happened with Yaradua. It's an interesting irony that I'd like to point out, that the day President Yaradua died, I was sitting with General Bukhari in his home in Kaduna, talking about that kind of behavior. And we know we are having the same thing repeat itself now. I think doctors, as a body, must insist that they have a right to produce a health report on the President of Nigeria and Ambassador of Nigeria every quarter. We must introduce this into whatever constitution that we bring forth. Is the reason Nigeria is not being run well? Because who is supposed to run the country? It's not running the country. Well, okay. It's just one of them. Yeah, yeah, you know. Um, the the, the real problem, I think, is that professions and professionals ought to see a role for themselves in the way our country is run and make inputs that involve, yes, their know-how and know-why into how the state is organized for the advance of the common good. Thank you very much, Pat, you told me. I think in rounding up, it is crucial to remind ourselves one thing, that the essence of us kicking forward conversations by professionals around professionals is the idea that a professional, because his discipline and train in a specific profession that has ethics, planning and his mode of operation can positively influence the larger society. And that professional, unlike many others, a professional of any kind, and and I think it is crucial at this point to remind all that we're not limiting this to white collar jobs. We should remember that from artisans onward, anybody that has received a training has a tie to the profession itself by virtue of merit, not by chance, by fate or by popularity contest. And that if you owe what you are to merit that is clear, logical and accountable, it is hoped that you will do something better for the society. And that mindset, when brought to the society, will be something that can help the society at large. As I said earlier on, this is the first in a series of Istanbul meetings. Those professionals who are interested in joining and being part of shaping these and participating in any kind should get in touch in the next days. We shall send out public contact. I guess this means we are coming out of the closet, as as it were. Yes, and so we we close it there and I'll give the last word to, um, to Mr. Mubulue.
My own is an appeal to all professionals uh, not to disdain public life or politics. Where we are today, we cannot leave the politics to those who just want to make a life, a living out of politics. We must bring in the discipline, the knowledge of the of the professionals to bear on governance. That truly is what can help us turn around things. And, believe me, many, many professionals are needed in politics. Not at the center alone, from the world level. Because even important values to party members at world level, at local government level, at state level and at the federal level, all are needed. And I hope that more professionals, those who are truly professional, will get involved and live above the morass that our politics have gone into. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. So we shall all be in touch and we see you from the next town hall meeting. Thank you very much for spending your time with us.
No, they cannot come back to you since you are shared. You cannot ask him now.